Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we'll call this meet a work session, excuse me, of the City Schools of the Catered Board of Education to order. It's five minutes after seven. And we have Edithell and myself, Lewis Jones is present, and I think we have Tasha White and Janet Johnson Davis, the video connection. And I do not know if we have James with us or not. James, are you with us?
He's not here yet.
Okay. James will join us when he gets here. And the topic today, I think, is budget, but I also thought it was accreditation.
You've got accreditation and budget.
Accreditation and budget. And for the attendees, because this is a work session, we will not have a public comment period. Public comment periods are for the regular meetings, but we do have a regular meeting coming up this coming Tuesday. So that will be the opportunity to provide comment on any, if you wish to comment. With that, I'll turn the agenda over to David.
All right. So the first thing we're going to do shouldn't take too long. We're going to walk through the, some stuff would be accreditation review. So we are still on schedule as before for accreditation. Maggie had a call with the person who is our contact today, and they gave her some good feedback on how to prepare for it and that, you know, we shouldn't be too worried about it, but we move forward and do our best. And they understand it's in the midst of a pandemic and all those other things. So what I gave you here in a printout, and I also emailed to the board members at home, and it's also in the agenda. If anyone wants to pull it up, it's attached, are the standards on the accreditation process that are related to the board specifically. So most of the standards we can take care of administratively and go through and do all the processing. But I wanted to make sure you knew which standards there were that are specific to the board so that you could be giving some thought to those. And basically, what we're, what we're going to eventually need to do in the next month or so is look at these and figure out what are we doing to meet the standard? If we don't feel like we're meeting it as well as we'd like, what can we do better? And then we can start gathering some evidence of what it looks like to. Here is what we're doing to meet the standards. Here's the plan for how to improve things where we want to improve, things like that. So just to give you a feel, a lot of this is very similar to what you heard with GSVA. It's things like how do you manage policies? How do you manage governance? What do you do to kind of self-check yourself as a governing board? Self-evaluation, that kind of thing. The Code of Ethics is a big piece of this. You may recall there have been boards in the past that got in trouble because they weren't following the Code of Ethics. And so that's a big part of the accreditation process in Georgia is making sure we have a Code of Ethics, which we do. It's written in our board policy and we all follow that. So you'll see a lot of stuff about Code of Ethics in here. So that's the gist of it. I'm happy to talk through if we want to start digging into it tonight a little bit to see where maybe you want me to start brainstorming some ideas of, especially in either where we think we have evidence so that Maggie and I can start gathering it, or where you think we need to improve so we can start helping create those plans. So when we get to the point of accreditation, we're ready. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Maggie, could you go with James and keep it outside? Thank you. And those doors right up there.
Thank you.
The interviews began, you might have already said this, but.
So I think the process is actually in February, if I remember correctly. So it's fairly soon, but we have some time to get stuff together.
Hey, James. One thing that occurs to me, hey, James, is that, you know, with our transition to policy governance that then got a little bit more than a little bit interrupted, so we're sort of in mid-transition. And I don't, you know, I would think that we're still doing most of what we're supposed to do as a board, but I have no doubt that one of the things we need to do is complete that so that we govern the whole system. And I guess we should at least identify that so that as we're going, you know, so we're going through the accreditation process, instead of just saying, shoot, we can say what we acknowledge that, you know, this, these things are yet undone, but here's our schedule.
Absolutely. I think it's, to me, accreditation is very much a growth opportunity. And I think it's a chance to look and be very cognizant of looking specifically at areas of strength and weakness and figuring out where to improve. So I think that's a perfect example. Like, we have documentation of the work we've done over the last five years towards policy governance. We have a lot of things in place, but we all know we have more that we need to do. And so it's a perfect example. Like, that would be part of the evidence of what we would do moving forward is that plan of how we're going to implement it. And then the next time we get accredited, they would want to see evidence that that plan was then done. So it's kind of that continuous improvement cycle. So that's a big piece of it, I think. There's quite a few things where our policy governance works will fit in. And I totally agree, we'll want to come up with a plan of how we continue that work because it did kind of pause in the midst of all of this crisis and whatnot. The one thing that jumped out at me on the Code of Ethics piece, like I said, we don't have an issue. We have our Code of Ethics. It's in the state law, it's in board policy. The one thing I think we might want to make sure we're doing is documenting. If you look on the back of page two of this section, let me find where it is here. "Longitudinal data provide evidence of the governing authority's ongoing adherence to the Code of Ethics and roles and responsibilities over time." And so I think part of what we're going to have to do in terms of improvement is make sure, on a regular basis, maybe once or twice a year, we actually say, all right, let's look at our Code of Ethics. Let's make sure we really are following it so that way we can have that evidence of longitudinally, yes, this is something we look at, we make sure that we're still following it. If we have any concerns, we address them. That's one of the things I think would be an example of something we can improve on because it's not something we talk about very often, we just all follow it, but we don't necessarily talk about it. And one of the things they want to know is you're being very intentional about it. They want to make sure you're intentionally saying, all right, let's look at our Code of Ethics this month, right? And talk through it.
That makes sense. But the Code of Ethics, I'm trying to remember, I feel like it's mostly kind of like financial and proprietary and conflicted.
That's a big part of it, yep.
Is it also the stuff about board superintendent roles?
I think part of that is in there. I can't remember how much of it's in Code of Ethics and how much of it is in the other section. I would have to double check on that.
Because it may take a point where I like certify it or something, but it's easy to comply with, you know?
So that's an example, I think, of a little thing that we would all agree we probably do a little better. You know, there's a lot of things like that where we just need to be more intentional with keeping on a schedule and things like that.
Now, on the other hand, it's a self-evaluation, which we, we talk about, but our retreat schedule has gotten off. As part of the self-evaluation, the board's self-evaluation retreat, we could, we could just have us, we could certify that we comply with Code of Ethics. We could add some things that are just something we do each year.
Exactly. And then just document it so we know we've got a record that, yes, we did this, so. Any questions about any of that? It's not a very big deal. I just didn't want you to be surprised when we got to the point of having to really pull it all together. And I can start pulling some of those things in like we were just talking about. And then, you know, we can, I don't know, maybe put it on even Tuesday night. We could have a little more discussion after we had a chance. I can pull some stuff together and we can have a little more in-depth conversation Tuesday. And then we'll want to do something else at the, at the next meeting. So does that sound okay with all of you? Tasha or Dana, you have any questions or thoughts on that?
Sounds good to me.
All right. So that's what we'll do. We don't need to dig into it any further unless you guys want to. Does that sound okay? Yep. All right. The other big thing is budget. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to have a discussion with you about budget. Oh, James, I just realized, I have a printout here for you. There you go. So what Lanita has done here is put together a very bare-bones budget just for points of us being able to have a conversation. This is the start of the discussion about the budget. And we will have a couple more meetings where we'll get into a lot more detail. But what we need from you is, one, to make sure you understand where we are in terms of budget. And two, we want to present some ideas to you about thoughts we have on where we might want to go. But we need your direction on which way we go with those things. So let me, you want me to walk them through kind of what's here? Okay. So what is in front of you on the big table, you've got the FY '20 budget and the unaudited actuels for FY '20. And then you have the FY '21 budget, which is what we adopted for the year we're in right now. You may recall, we didn't amend it, was it the last meeting or maybe the one before? October. At the October meeting, we did an amendment to the budget. That's what that amended column is. We're about to have to do another amendment, which we'll bring to you on Tuesday to reflect the additional teachers we need in order to do the plan that we have for moving back to some in-person learning. So that's what the amended two budget is. So what we did in putting this together, the FY '22 budget, and if you look on the back of that sheet, you can see the assumptions. But the gist of it is, if we did an absolutely bare-bones budget without any decisions being made yet, what would it look like? And so the tax revenues go up a little bit because the, Lanita worked with the city and GSU to get tax projections. And so the tax revenue would go up a little. If we kept all of the salaries and benefits the same, no step increases, no cost of living increases, no changes to staffing, you'll notice it looks like the number goes down, but that's because we left it at how this year started. We took out the COVID-related extra expenses and put it back to what it was originally.
The extra expenses, including personnel expenses?
Correct, exactly.
So the people who's been hired are temporary?
Correct, exactly.
They're never temporary?
Yep, yep. And so that's why you see some of those, they look like they're going back to the start of FY '20 budget, '21 budget. That's why, because a lot of those positions are just to get us through the end of this school year. You'll see some changes, sorry to jump back up to revenues at the top. The local fair share changes slightly. You'll see we continued the austerity reduction because we are anticipating, although we don't know for sure. We would imagine the state, they did, what was it, a 10% cut? We imagine they're going to continue with that. And so we put that in there or left that in there as well. So what you can see in that second to the last column is with those assumptions, we end up with a 0.5% unspent balance. So that's at the very bottom of that column. And so that's pretty tight, right? You may recall, we have a board policy that says we need to maintain between 4% and 15% unspent balance. So what we did is we added one more column, and we just did kind of a thought experiment of what would the millage rate have to be if that's all you changed to get to our minimum unspent balance of 4%? So in order to get to 4%, leaving everything else the same, we would have to make the millage rate 21.55. So that's just for your reference so you have a feel for where we are if we wanted to try in one year to get to that unspent balance of 4%, okay? Everything else is the, is the same between those two columns. So what we want to talk about tonight are some of the options and opportunities that we have for you to give us some direction on what you think we might want to do. So one of them, which I hope will be a very last-ditch effort, and I think you guys would agree, we wanted to present to you the, what savings would be if we did a furlough day. That is a popular option among school districts. I know we have done everything we can to avoid it, and I think we will probably continue to do that. But it wouldn't have been responsible for us to bring this to you without showing you the cost savings. So one furlough day saves approximately $322,000, $322,000, right? Some other options are we could reduce our operating budgets. So this would be the budgets that individual departments get, that individual schools get. So we could cut those back a little bit. If we cut that 10%, that would be a million-dollar savings. 15% would be $1.4 million savings. As you know, something like 90% of our budget is personnel. And so that's why even a 10% cut in the operating budget is not huge. It does not have a huge impact because personnel is such a huge part of our budget. Just for your reference, we wanted to make sure you knew, because I know as we go through this process, we're going to want to talk about what would different millage rates do. And so what we presented to you is the millage rate in terms of just a 0.1 increment. So if you wanted to go from 20.25 to 20.35, that would generate another $222,666. So that way you have a way to calculate what those amounts would look like as an option if millage rate is going to be an option for us. And then a couple of opportunities I had, I think we have for generating revenue, which I think we need to discuss. One is kind of a no-brainer that there's, that there's going to be another CARES grant, which we, of course, will go through or go for. That's not very big, but it's a lot, it's enough, right? $45,000 is helpful. Another I think we need to talk about is the potential, as you saw up above in the assumptions, all this is based on us decreasing 52 students. One of the things we could consider is updating our policy on accepting tuition students. And I think that's something we might want to discuss. If we have certain classes at certain grade levels that have room for additional students come fall, one option could be to reintroduce some level of tuition-paying students. And then the other, another option I think we should consider is whether or not we want to sell the properties that we purchased for the option of potentially expanding. It's not looking like they're going to be needed in the near future. And so just a reminder, we own three houses next to Westchester, and we own one house next to College Heights. And since we purchased those, we also purchased the land right next to this facility. And so especially the College Heights one, it's probably not nearly as important to hold on to. But we may want to consider that as well because that could generate some one-time revenue as well. So those were some thoughts we had, just to give you a picture of where we are. I'm sure it's not surprising that it's a little bit bleak. I do think it could be much worse, given all of what we've had to deal with. I'm glad that our unspent balance isn't zero. I mean, that's kind of fatalistic maybe, but I was really worried. And so we've been working hard to not overdo it. But obviously, as you know, there's been a lot of extra expenses because of what we've been dealing with. So that's the gist of where we are with the budget. Looks a little bit better than I was anticipating, but it's still pretty bleak. So we need to get your thoughts on things like millage rates, things like cost of living and steps, things like personnel, other budget cuts, opportunity, the idea of perhaps doing tuition and whatnot. So these are not all things we have to know tonight, just to be clear. This is a multi-step process. The more we can learn from you tonight, the more we can do before Tuesday to give you some more options. So if there are things that you feel are pretty clear direction for you, that can help us as we prepare a draft for Tuesday night. But you don't have, this isn't something that has to be decided tonight. We still have time to go through our, our process and figure those things out, so.
Have we given any thought, or have you all given any thought? You know, it's one thing to hold the current programming flat. Coming off this year, we need to be frankly pouring resources into remedial help to catch people up. Have you all thought about the budget impact of that because I think it's essential?
Well, and it's quite possible, it's a great question. And it's quite possible that we'll need to end up, for instance, maybe we won't need quite as few teachers next year, but we may want to keep them on board in order to provide that remedial support. So that's why we held everything even. We have not done a calculation of specific programs we want to try to do or something like that. But that's one of the reasons we kept it even instead of decreasing it with losing students.
So in other words, the budget we're looking at would accommodate some level of that, is what you're going?
Yep.
But David, if we, with the operating, if we reduced operating budgets, would that impact potential remediation programs?
Well, so if we did it across the board, yes. So we may want to be more strategic than that. And that's part of the input that would be helpful from all of you is, obviously, our operating budget is not huge. But if we had a feel for, yes, let's go ahead with a budget cut, but try to do it more precisely, not across the board, and try not to hit those programs that most impact, you know, remediation and helping students catch up and things like that, we could be much more strategic about it. If we did that, we might want to say, all right, we're going to cut budgets 15% because we're going to allow these other budgets not to be cut. And so we may want to be a little more strategic and go for a 10% overall, maybe not across the board though. So we could certainly consider that if that would be of interest.
Can you, can you just refresh my memory about tuition students? Because if I recall, the tuition that we collect doesn't cover fully the cost of educating a student. But then we get some, just explain how that comes out and how that puts us ahead if we did that.
So the reason it would put us ahead, so first of all, what you see for tuition on this sheet is almost all ECLC. We have very few tuition-paying K-12 students left. Most of them have aged down or moved, okay? But if we were to accept K-12 tuition students, the, the formula is set by statute what you're allowed to charge. And so you would get the QBE funding for those kids, and you would get the tuition dollars for those kids. But it would not equal the average cost of what we pay for a kid. So you might wonder, why would I even recommend that then? And that is because the incremental cost is almost nothing. So what you're doing is being strategic about bringing new kids in. And say you've got five kindergarten slots open, so you allow five more students to come in, you have to be strategic about it for it not to cost extra because then you're not hiring more people. You're using slots that could be filled by a kid without causing more cost. That's the, that's the idea behind this.
So I can see how we could project that for one year at a time, but then we, we may not know, like, once we accept that student, I'm assuming we would allow them to continue through the system?
That's part of what we need to talk about is, and obviously, if our, if we shifted policy and said, we'll accept students and once you're in, you're in, that's different than saying, we can guarantee you this one school year, and then you'll be first on the list if we have slots for your grade the next school year, right? Or something like that. And not necessarily have that guarantee will be less attractive to people and maybe less likely to draw people in, so.
I also was just thinking that we really don't know what numbers are going to look like for kindergarten and first grade next year because this year we've had such a decrease in enrollment from kindergarteners because of COVID. We, we may want to consider that if we have very block-sided grades, just to keep continuity between, you know, as kids progress through the system. Because I could see that for us and for many school systems, that can be an ongoing issue for the next 13 years as these kids enter kindergarten and go all the way through 12. So that actually could be something that helps us to even out class sizes, grade level, to also, so that we also can keep stability in our teachers, you know, like how many third grade teachers.
And that's really a big part of what it is, is trying to make sure, because we, we've worked really hard to hire the best teachers we can, and you hate to lose them one year and need them the next year.
Right.
And this would be one way to even that out a little bit, exactly like you're talking about.
Right. The question will be, when will we know that? And will we have time, like, how will we?
So the, basically, what it would look like is you'd go ahead and do all of your registration for the coming school year, which is where you would then have a much better idea of who is planning to come back, who is planning, who maybe pulled their kids out to homeschool or to do private school and planning to re-enroll them. You would go through your registration process in the spring, and only then would you start opening it up through tuition paying, once you saw where you had extra seats that you could fill.
I think that makes a lot of sense. We'd have to take a very conservative approach to available seats, you know, to make sure that we've got room for catered residents first.
Correct.
But depending on what the projections look like and looking, you know, back historically and, but I think it makes a ton of sense. And you know, like, accepting kids into the high school would be the easiest and most obvious, right? Because you have less time to predict what's going to happen. Accepting a kindergartner would be kind of perilous, I think, maybe, but.
Especially if we, if we were trying to do it with a commitment to see it through as long as they wanted to stay. That's a much, that's a much more complicated proposition, so.
And I'm, and I'm really comfortable saying, I mean, I think we ought to try, you know, if they're going to come, we ought to try to keep them and make them fully our students. But if there are situations where it's really uncertain, it's kind of borderline, and somebody wanted to come under those circumstances.
I think as long as we're, we would need to be very upfront, right, of.
I have to kind of wonder, is that really a good thing? I mean, are we inviting them into a really bad situation? They don't want to go hopping around from system to system.
I mean, people are all in different situations, right? Some people would say, hey, if I can get my kid in that school for a year, that's better than not having them in that school at all, right? It really depends on people's individual situations. I think the less certainty there would be, the more difficult it would be to find people who would fill the seats. And so we, what we can do is dig into it further, knowing that there is some interest in it as a potential solution. And we can start kind of laying out some of those, like, scenarios of grade levels, of how many kids we even think it might be able to be, what kind of income it would generate, things like that, so.
I think it could even potentially be different by grade level. We could accept first graders, you know, hypothetically, accept first graders and not third graders. If they saw that we had a big gap there. And you might also have different conditions, like we might, if we thought that, you know, there's less risk of accepting a high schooler for the entire term and maybe also arguably more importance for continuity, maybe that could have different conditions. I would look to you for recommendations there, depending on the analysis of our student enrollment and what, what you think might be viable.
We also could consider, like, kind of a hybrid of the two, right? We could say, hey, if we should accept you at K-2, you can stay during K-2, right? It's not until the next grade band that we can't guarantee a slot for you. So we, we'll look at it and see what might work and what might not, and kind of put some numbers to it.
Okay. My initial gut is that I, my initial gut is that I would like to offer continuity to the family because I feel like that would be the better choice for the child overall.
Exactly.
So, but I think it'll be interesting to hear the options.
Definitely. I definitely support that going down that path. We've also historically seen that the majority of our tuition students were students of color. And so this also kind of answers and helps in two, two ways, twofold. So, and I agree, the continuity, I think, is important. So as much as we can offer that, I think that would be helpful. So I definitely agree that that's a path we should at least explore further.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say was, I'd like to see us reach out about potential scholarships or, you know, not just relying on parents. It's not just what rich kids live nearby, they would like to pay into it. And I know that there is a population bubble in the current fourth grade amongst our numbers, right? Because both Italian and FAB, they have had to hire extra teachers this year and the year before. So it's definitely a good solution to that potential problem. I'm interested in it. But we very much want the opportunity for someone that they're in to stick around. Come for a year, kick them out, that, that's heartbreaking.
Yep. Yeah, I think it'd be really hard for us to stick with that even if we did have that plan, just knowing how we are. Once they're our kids, they're our kids, and so, okay.
Amongst the other stuff, unless, Dana, do you want to mention tuition or anything?
You can go ahead. I was going to talk about something else, so I'll go after you.
The operating cost thing? At first, I might push back as big, but then I think across the state, as we hear from other school systems and so on, I mean, we did just ask, take a giant austerity. I know that we have very generous operating budgets, having sat through the SLP, having sat through new principals. Before we made a decision, I would love to see, to ask the principals, given that you do default so much of that to them, if you had to deal with a 10% cut next year, what would that look like? What, how big of an impact would that be on your day-to-day stuff? I mean, because that might be the obvious solution. If they come back and say, no. I would love, that would be my first place to go.
Yeah, we can work, we can work on what that would look like at half the department and school level.
Right.
If we were to do that.
I was also wondering how, oh, sorry, Jana, go ahead.
I was going to say, you know, with the cost of living, no cost of living increases and no step adjustments, I'm hesitant to have a furlough day on top of that. That, I would want to avoid that. Folks are, you know, they have their budgets planned based on their paychecks and since we are not going to be able to, you know, the assumption is that we're not going to be able to do those things, and I would really try to avoid the furlough day.
Well, I, I want to be clear, that's only the assumption if we, that's for the bare-bones budget. If the board wants us to try to figure out how to do a step or a cost of living, we can run those numbers so that we can see what it would take. But as you can see, I mean, a one and a half, let's say a one and a half percent increase through a step increase on that salaries line, one and a half percent of $50 million is what's going to change. And so I, I don't want you to think what we're recommending is no salary increase, no step increase. What, this is just the baseline if we don't change anything. So, but obviously, as you can see, if we did those things, there, that money has to come from somewhere. And so if we were to do that, we would have to figure out how to pay for it. So I just want to make sure that's clear. We're, we're not making a recommendation on, as, with this budget, we're just trying to give you options.
Point clarity, the no step adjustment.
Yep.
Doesn't mean people wouldn't move up a step, it means that the steps themselves would be adjusted.
There's two different ways for doing it. So what happens a lot of times is you, you get a step, but the entire salary scale just bumps it down a step. So that your, you go to another step, but it's the same value that it was the previous year.
Right.
Others just, they don't, they don't add a step, they leave all the salary schedules untouched. And you just, if you were on 15, you're on 15 again the following year. So we could explore, there's probably the kinds of both because of the long-term implications of what it means, but.
So what is the recommendation here?
We don't have a recommendation here yet. We need to, we wanted to get your thoughts on whether or not we should be pursuing those or not.
Well, I guess fiscally, is there a difference between keeping the 15 to 15 versus?
15 to 15, I would say is the least expensive option. The idea of moving the scale down one, is that, yes, the salaries remain the same, but long-term, you've now shifted your whole salary schedule and you're never going to shift it back. So you've now shifted your salaries.
In the past, haven't we just stayed the same?
Like on the. And do you mean, Jana, like, if you're on step 15, you stayed on step 15?
Right.
Kind of thing? I don't know, but we can research it. None of us were here when it happened before, so I, I'll find out.
So I've never understood the step. It's never made any sense to me. And every time we talk about it, I guess. And the only, the only, of the options, it seems to me, I've always thought that what we were doing was essentially changing the salary schedule so that even now, even though you've now been here for 16 years, you're getting paid, paid the same as, which I thought was changing the salary.
It is true, because the cost of living adjustment is a multiplier to the salary scale.
That's right.
The step is moving you from one line to the next, which in most cases is an increase in and of itself. There are some quirks where there's, they're in two-year steps in Georgia.
I understand, I understand the call. It's the language that confused.
Okay.
Because I always kind of thought that, can't hold me back, like I always joke with my kids that I might not let them have their birthday or something like that, that you can't do that. Because you're going to be a 16th year employee.
Well, so the, where it gets complicated is that then becomes a difference between your step and your years of experience. Now typically, when you can just go step by step by step, your years of experience and your steps are the same. But what happens in a year where you don't give a step increase, if you do the option where you keep everyone on the same step, they will, let's say they were at 15 years, 15 step, next year they'll have 16 years and be at the 15th step and that will continue for the rest of their time there then. That's why, that's the difference. The advantage of moving the scale is people continue on in the steps. But you're now never going to move that scale back.
I don't have, I don't honestly have an opinion, I just get confused by the.
I agree, it is confusing, for sure.
I was just thinking about the senior tax exemption and how that has cost us more and more each year. And last year, I think, what were we at, like, close to $5 million for the total cost of the senior tax exemptions?
Yep.
And I, I'm just wondering if that's been projected here because that tended to increase significantly each year that we've had it. But then after.
I think it increased much faster early on than later.
But has, so that's been taken into account here?
But we should, we should be getting some of it back.
Well, after 2022.
Yeah, that would be the following year.
Oh, that's right, that helps me.
You have any thoughts on that one?
Yeah, we'll have a, there's one whole fiscal year between now and when that might change. But I think, I, I just want to be assured that that's factored in.
I, I assume it is, but I'm not sure exactly how.
It has been factored, but we have taken the conservative approach as far as the revenue.
So was the, so the number, the $45 million, $89,000 on the FY22 budget, that is a straight calculation of the property values and the millage rate without taking exemptions into account?
The senior exemption.
Yeah, the senior exemption, okay.
So what does that mean? Like, that we, that we might have a budget of $5 million less?
No, let's look at it. Let's double check. I don't think that's what it's going to mean because our FY21 budget is what we actually adopted.
Right.
And that's 42 million. So it may be because of, let, let me double check it. Lani and I will talk, but it may be just because of the conservative way we do our, our budgeting.
Okay.
That, that's where we're accommodating it and not with an actual separate calculation.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll touch base on that so we can be more clear for you on tuition.
So just to express a preference, and, and this is based on nothing because we don't know how much we could save through operating cuts. We don't know what would be cut or anything else. But, but my starting point is that we need to be spending more rather than less because there's more to be done. And I, and I don't think that it's the time to be cutting. I, I just don't think that we can afford it in terms of the kids developing. And so I think that it's very reasonable to consider, it pains me, but I think it's reasonable to consider an increase in the millage to try to stay, to, to maintain the current level. I, I think that we should be considering holding the steps flat to, to make room for this, you know, it's kind of, everybody gives a little bit.
Yep.
And I also think, you know, this, we started when you got into this and you had a modified version of zero, what do you call it?
Zero-based budgeting?
Zero-based budgeting. Where although I wouldn't want to go in saying we're going to cut everybody by 10%, I think it'd be entirely reasonable to say, look, if we're going to, if we're going to be increasing the millage, if we're going to be doing these other things, let's also see where, what can we get from programs that should be cut? You know, now's the time to take a look and where there's some fat, let's cut it. But instead of cutting it and, you know, giving it back, I think we cut it and that's what, then we put more into the remediation. But I would do, I would do that as a way to target funds when they're needed. But it just, it seems doubtful to me that we, it would be good for the kids to be cutting budgets at the time.
No, I think it's a really good point. And part of what we need to look at is, and one of the reasons why in the final column we only put trying to get to a minimum fund balance on the, you may, I, I think I mentioned earlier, that's not necessarily something we need to achieve in one year, right? We have to be realistic that it took many years to build up the fund balance that we had. And so we don't also, we don't have to say, we have to instantly get to that point. We definitely need to have a plan to get to that point. But it is something I think we need to take into consideration for exactly the reason you're saying. Because we are going to have some catching up to do. And maybe this isn't the time to be cutting the things because of that, so.
I, I agree that we're going to have a lot of, like, educationally remediation to do. And just on, one of the reasons why I'm thinking about the senior tax exemption specifically is because when that does shift, we will, like, if we did increase the millage rate for this year to bridge this gap, which may be one piece of the puzzle, not the only one, I agree with looking at all angles of this. But we could then potentially lower that again, once we have, have implemented potentially a revised senior tax exemption, which is what we talked about all along. I mean, it's kind of the inverse of what happened before. So we could, we do kind of, this year is going to be very, very particular and very unusual. And so I agree with taking a little bit more of a long-term approach to make sure that we are really balancing the needs of our students.
And, and part of what we can do as we move through the process, it's, it's very laborious, so if, we don't want to try to do it too early in the process, but as we move through the process, we can try to project out some future years for exactly that purpose of what is the senior home, this home study exemption impact three years from now versus next year, some of those kind of things. So we can definitely look at that.
Yeah, it's definitely just one piece of the puzzle and the, you know, the students, like we talked about the student enrollment, numbers will have a huge impact on our budget wherever they end up, and that's a big variable.
But that was, that was a big part of the finance thing at the Georgia School Board stuff. So at the state level, public school enrollment is down 3.5%. We're at less than 1% or right there, right? Because 52, gotta read that on the list, it's everything.
Yes, 52.
So, I mean, kids have to go to the school somewhere once they're no longer in COVID. And the financing thing they talked about, I mean, that would impact the QBE. I am very hesitant to report the increase in millage rate because the entirety of it is just the state austerity reduction. Like, that's the entirety of it, just doing the math. The difference between last year and this year is 3.2 million. Where's that 3, oh, boom, there it is.
Right.
Could have highlighted it. So if enrollment goes back to 52, we're good. If enrollment goes up, which it might, we're good.
Yeah.
Austerity cuts last less than, adjust her for one more year and we get vaccinated and open back up and the state turns it around, then we're good. I would hate to try to refill in one year.
Yep.
Because you, we are conservative, this is a conservative budget.
Yep.
And we do have the senior tax exemption going away at the end of the next year as well. I would hate to raise taxes because while we do have some education stuff, the economy is also bad on a lot of homeowners too, right? It's a, I would hate to say, oh, and by the way, your taxes are going up.
Just the senior tax exemption is not going away.
It's not due to.
We're keeping this.
Before you go on, everything. Good catch.
I get your point.
No, no, no.
No, it's a good point, Jane.
It depends on what gets cut. I mean, if we can just.
The, the one thing too, just to remember, I, I think most of you know this already, but the budget that we give to, like, individual schools, for instance, is considerably more than what most schools in the state get. Because what most schools give is what the QBE budget gives them, and ours typically are about double. So not to say that that means there's a lot that we can cut because we do a lot with that funding, but I do want to make sure that we remember that, right? That there are things, a, a lot of what we do, we do over and above what the state does. And so we can try to find some, some efficiencies there.
I hear that. And I, I might be wrong, but I just think that we have massive makeup work to do. And I think if we're trying to be chancy about it, we're just, you know, I, I get it, that, that times are hard, but I do think that's one of the things that frankly makes, I mean, we, we support our schools. I mean, coming off this year, trying to then cut, cut what we're doing? Oh my God. I, I, I just, I mean, if it's, you know, if we look and find out there's fat in the budget, we should cut it, but.
I mean, just to be clear, I'm pretty sure we're not going to find fat in the budget because we have cut them several times, right? Over the last several years. I think they're pretty lean. I think it would more be like what you were referring to, Louis, all right, this program that we tried for a couple of years, it's not a good use of our money anymore, it's not a whole lot of kids, they could do this thing instead, let's reshift that money from this thing to that thing. I think that is more likely that we'll find something like that than be able to say, hey, we're giving you money that you don't really need.
And I, we should be doing that. That's just, that's just healthy budgeting.
Yep. It has been very unpopular in the past though.
I know.
But I think if there's ever a time to face reality, now is the time, so.
Regarding the properties.
Yep.
My own feeling is that I would favor keeping them.
Okay.
Just because they're strategic and long-term.
Yep.
And I think we might need them at some point.
Yep.
And it's always worried me that we're just letting them waste. If there was some way, you know, if we could, if we could get them in shape to hire a company to lease them out so that they're not just wasting.
Right.
We could get a little bit of income from them, but really to justify keeping them, not, not as a profit, right, really, but, but just to keep them around and expect that it might take a couple of years to get, to get it back if we need it and we can have it.
Right. We can certainly explore that. Just so you're aware, we do keep them up. Like, we, because we track on them, we have a lawn care crews and whatnot, so they, they should be in the state that we would be able to, I mean, the water's been turned off, obviously, but we still keep them so that they're not getting too much damage and whatnot.
Do you not have, like, the utilities turned on, do you?
We do have utilities.
But not getting air, so it's on like, you know, 55 degrees or something like that.
Exactly.
Well, that's good.
So, yeah, we can explore that. I think the one thing, the, the one hesitancy I have about renting them out is it's quite possible we'll get more kids. And the cost of educating the three kids that move in there may be more than what we get from rent.
I'm guessing you're not allowed to discriminate because families have children.
That's part of a, that's part of the challenge with, with renting them, but we could certainly explore it. Other thoughts on any of those ideas that were in there or, or other ideas maybe we haven't thought of that you guys have, that you'd like us to look for?
The only one I'd like to, the only one I'd like to hopefully stay away from is the, the furloughing for one day, if that's all possible. I agree with Louis that if we need to maybe go up, what was that figure again, if we went from .25 to .35 on the millage rate?
Each .1 is worth a little over $200,000, $222,000. So I'm sure you all recall, we did our competitive salary report, what was it, a year ago, two years ago, 18 months, I don't know. And one of the things we had talked about is trying to remain competitive, especially as others were unable to remain competitive. So I do want to bring that up. This would be one of those opportunities, even the fact if we held steady, I think probably will be good. But if it's something that we may want to consider trying to also do, even if it's a very small cost of living adjustment perhaps, or only doing a step with no cost of living adjustment, is one way for us to kind of close that gap. Maybe this isn't the year to do it, but I do want to throw that out there as this is the kind of opportunity we needed in order to start closing that gap and making sure we were competitive. So I would like to get your thoughts on that as well, if you'd like us to even explore that at all. Or if it's something we better, it would be better to stay away from given the state of the finances.
It's always good to look at it. I think in the past as a board, we've been very supportive of our teachers and wanting to pay them well. I think it's important to point out that we kept our increases that we had budgeted for last year, even after we got the austerity cut. And we, as a board, decided that that was a priority. And so I think it's sort of reminding us, reminding us of what we were able to do last year, which did make us more competitive during what has turned out to be a really financially challenging year of significant. So we, I believe we probably made some progress there last year. I think it's important to look at, I mean, we can't promise anything, but I think we should put all options on the table and just understand at least what choices we're making.
Well, part of what we can do is make sure it's clear, like, if we did give a step increase without cost of living, make sure you know what that amount would look like.
Right.
Um, we can also focus on, because not all employee groups. We can also focus on, because not all employee groups were as far behind as other employee groups. So we can try to look at it from an employee group perspective. In case you wanted to do something differently, like if teachers were further behind than other groups, maybe we just primarily focus on teachers or something like that. So we can try to throw some of those numbers together so you at least have that as a baseline so you know what it would look like if we did try to do something.
Yeah, we were provided a really great report last year that even showed it by, not only just by teacher as a whole group, but by levels of teachers, because certain levels of teachers, and I think, I can't remember specifically, but maybe it was like some of the lower end were not as competitive. And so we saw we're at different levels of seniority. There were different size gaps.
Yep.
So we could look, look at that. I think it's worth considering. Knowing that, I mean, this is a three-legged stool. I mean, we're gonna have to have, you know, either tax increases or budget decreases or, you know, we can't have it all.
Yep. Well, we will do our best to pull together as much data as we can so that as we have those next discussions, you can have some specific dollar amounts to have a feel for what it is. We're looking at, we'll get together with principals. We can try to do it before Tuesday. I don't know if we will have time or not, but we'll just do what we can to start talking through, like, where are our opportunities? Some of this we have from last year because we had some of these conversations before. So we'll pull off those things as well. But having those discussions with them as well, to your point, Jane, so making sure we understand what would it look like at the individual school level, for instance, for various options. So we can start pulling all that together. We'll get as much of it together for Tuesday as possible. Some of it may have to wait for our next discussion, but we'll get as much of that pulled together right away as we can.
We might want to consider making another work session to really dig into that.
I think we might want to.
Last year, we did a great job, you and your team did a great job of getting us a lot of detailed information about the budget very, very early.
Yep.
And that served us well in many ways because of, specifically because of hiring. We were able to hire some of the best people because we were out early. So whatever we can do to move this along, you know, I think we should all consider.
Yes. I definitely think a February work session would be quite valuable, if not before that possibly. Let us look at the calendar and look at what we think we can accomplish when and we make some recommendations on.
Okay.
But I do think it would be very helpful to get together again after next Tuesday's meeting to have some more discussion. Because there are gonna be a lot of hard decisions to make. This won't be, you know, some years it could just kind of sails through. It's pretty obvious what to do. This is not one of those years for sure. Okay, well, this is super helpful to us to get your feedback on those things. Are there other things that, perspectives you have or things you wanted to throw out there for us to look at that haven't come up?
Can Lanita refinance anything else and just follow the rest of the budget?
Yeah, you know, if we could just keep refinancing.
That would be great.
A couple million every time.
Works all the time.
I think the answer is that there's nothing there, but we used to talk about generating money with our use of facilities. And, you know, I know there's gonna change at the DHS. Are we still? And I thought that some of that was...
We had feedback on that because we were losing money, not gaining money the way we had hoped. So we could certainly look at it again. I would be very hesitant because it's so disruptive to things.
If it's not making money, there's no point.
It's just, and maybe if we allowed it to be even more disruptive, we might be able to turn a profit. But I just, I don't, to me, it's not worth it. The disruption it has to the educational environment, it's not worth it. We still are doing small-scale facility rentals for, you know, neighborhood groups and things like that, but not like revenue generating. We're not trying to do that.
I thought that was the answer, but...
Any other thoughts? Anything you want to add, Lanita? Do you have any questions you have that we should get answered in that studio?
I just want to make sure you all are aware again, this is the bare minimum.
Yep.
The legislation has not started discussion on if there's going to be funds, who, how there's going to be funds.
So like usual, subject to change.
Exactly.
So that austerity reduction is just an assumption that they'll say, run the same thing back?
Is that your assumption or is that, is that what like G S B A is saying?
They're not saying anything. So that's our assumption.
It's just our kind of word on the street assumption.
It is, it is kind of a word on the street.
That's a nice, yeah.
Until we hear something different.
Yep, that's good. Yep. All right. Well, that's what we needed from you tonight. Unless there's something else you want to discuss, that is super helpful.
Anything else?
Just a reminder, we have, I think we have a time slot for a board session on January 26.
Oh, awesome.
So if we want, I don't know if we had a, if we had an idea of what we were gonna be talking about, but we can just go ahead and slide budget in there and keep it for the 26th if that works for everybody.
That would be awesome, actually. Thank you for noticing that.
This might not be my place anymore, but it would make sense, you know, we were supposed to, our policies, one of the things that we started doing was to have a board work plan where we actually plan out the year. And say, here are, here's what we as a board need to be working on over the course of the next year. Let's figure out how we're gonna use our work sessions going forward and basically what we need to be thinking about. And it's, we fell off of that with all that has happened, but it was pretty effective while we were doing it.
Yep.
And it would be good to do it early.
Well, so what we could, because that fits right into this accreditation piece as well.
It does.
That is exactly what that's about. So we could just kind of have a repeat of this meeting at that, what'd you say, the 26th, Tasha?
That's also the State of the City at 5:00 P. M.
Oh, it's one of those, okay.
I had that on my calendar and I was wondering if I put that in the wrong date.
Well, let's talk Tuesday about if we want to keep it that way because I know that's been challenging for us in the past if we want to move it.
We could shift it to another, maybe shift it to another date.
We could. Well, I, it'd be nice, you know, having all these different meetings on the calendar.
Yes.
And in this case, the State of the City is gonna be virtual.
Right.
And so...
Oh, that's right.
It's not gonna be quite the same. You know, in the past, we've had to go in there and run to another event.
Let me check with Andrea and I'll get some more details on like how long they think that's gonna last.
Okay.
I'll try to let you know on Tuesday when I find out and we can see if we want to move it.
Yeah, that might make sense to combine it if we're just off here.
Yep. Okay, so at the next work session then, of course, we'll have an update on Tuesday. We'll try to get as much of this pulled together Tuesday as possible. But then we'll plan to have more in-depth discussion at that following work session on both budget and getting into some of the details on this accreditation piece. Awesome.
And we have, we already have a work session scheduled for the 23rd of February, right?
I think so.
Yes. Okay.
Perfect. We're gonna need them.
Anything else or should we adjourn?
That's all I have.
We are, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.